Good morning, everyone. It's August 20th, 2025 at 10:00 a.m., Wednesday morning. Thank you, everybody, for your attendance. If you would please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
It says like you're batting that.
It kicks on automatically, but do you use it?
No, I don't even know how it must.
Dig into it later and figure out. Um, all right. About your attendance for the record this morning, present is Commissioner Frank and myself, Judge Hart. Commissioner Doros has an excused absence today and won't be attending. Uh, agenda approval, any agenda changes?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Uh, second, a motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda for today's county court session, regular session. Any further discussion? All, uh, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye and opposed. In hearing none, motion carries. Minutes approval. Uh, we have two sets of minutes, one for, uh, county court regular session on August 6th and work session, uh, minutes from, um, county court work session regarding, um, economic development on 8/14. Any changes?
I move to approve the minutes as presented for the regular session on August 6th and the work session regarding economic development on August 14th.
And I will second. Now, motion's been made and seconded to approve regular session, Harney County Court regular session minutes from August 6th, 6th and Harney County Court work session minutes from August 14th. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye and opposed. In hearing none, motion carries. Next topic, recognition of service. So today we recognize Chad, Chad Angel, Facility Maintenance, um, manager, and, uh, Chad has been with us for five years since 8/17 of 2020. So I guess you got just a couple of days to go, right? Or no, today's, today's the 20th. You're over by three days. My calendar was backwards. Um, Chad, thank you very much for your service to Harney County and just a momentum from, from the county court.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Solid goal.
Hope to have you around for another five. We'll do this all over again. Next topic, opportunity for public comment. Any public comment? Not seeing any or hearing any, we should move on. Um, updates. First update we have is from the Harney County Long-Term Recovery Group, Stacy Davies, sir.
Couple of extra copies. Thank you. Please share. First, first off, disasters happen locally and they're best solved locally. And so the Long-Term Recovery Group was established following the flood as a group that could help, uh, with recovery of issues that happened during the flood, primarily focused on housing, getting families and individuals back into their homes. We, uh, I just a few points would update you on. They're covered in the, uh, handout, but, uh, we are an official organization with bylaws in place and we have contracted with Harney Hub to administer most of the programs. We've, uh, assisted 33 homes at a cost of 206,000 plus, and we have 21 families and homes that we're working with currently with some funding available to help them. We expect there'll be a few more that come in. There weren't many more than that that were affected, but most people, uh, either took care of it themselves. We're actually very fortunate in this community that we take care of one another very well. And the Red Cross, Rubicon, all of the groups, even the, uh, Small Business Administration, they're amazed at how Harney County people take care of Harney County people. And we do tend to solve our problems and so, um, the community needs, uh, some appreciation shown for that. We, uh, have received an additional hundred thousand plus from various sources. The original 206,000 came from Orem, the, uh, Department of Human Services, um, what's Orem stand for?
Office of Brazilians.
Thank you. I guess I should recognize we have Lance Starbuck and Sue Weathers here as part of our committee assisting me in this presentation. In addition, we've received some donations from some other groups which, uh, we, uh, have created a, a process that people apply for funds with the group and we consider their case according to some criteria and we'll be assisting some of these 21 cases out of the 100,000 plus we have left. Would you like to add anything at this point?
Um, at least I have $8, you know, they personally will be working with people. There's, uh, out of those 21 cases, she'll be working with that, so.
So in addition to the 100,000 plus that we've had contributed, we can still apply for additional Orem funds. They look now, their initial funding came. Now, as we move into the second phase of funding, Orem will look to see if there's local support and um, they will continue to help us some, but we need that local support to show that, um, we have local, local funds available. And with that, we're asking the Harney County Court to donate up to 10,000, around 10,000 to the group. We'd be able to leverage that amount when we go for additional grants and funds throughout the state. We're also asking that the county court annex their emergency management plan to include a section on recovery. And we have a few points here we'd encourage you to include, at least consider, as you write that recovery annex. Some things that we feel like we learned from the last disaster that would help the next one go smoothly. Really having that annex, that, uh, chapter in place, that section in place. A lot of times, funding comes during the disaster and the folks that are really managing the disaster, business managing the disaster, we need to have approved and in place a process where as the state and federal and even local donations come in, a fund and a place and, but they can go and, uh, have that in, in, in existence ahead of the disaster so it just operates smoothly. As a long-term recovery group, uh, we exist to assist the local governments with disaster recovery. We greatly appreciate the support that the, uh, county court and the burn city have given us in the, in the past and uh, we ask that you continue to send referrals, both people who have needs or have funding available, send them to us and we'll help you the best we can. And with that, we're open to questions.
Uh, I wear a couple of different hats here. I'm sitting behind this table today, but I'm also a member of, of the board. Um, and just to clarify, I know we discussed a little bit of this yesterday at the weekly board meeting. Um, in your bullet A for, for the, um, recovery annex, uh, designate entry slash fund, entity slash fund that can receive donations. So in that, if I recall from yesterday's, what you're asking is for the Long-Term Recovery Group to be get, um, identified as that entity? Okay.
So there's both short-term and long-term and we would need the long-term recovery, short-term recovery. What we saw in this last disaster is there was a lot of both things and money that became available for the immediate short-term recovery and, um, making sure that an entity is designated for short-term and long-term recovery would allow that money to just be, um, donated immediately.
I know we did receive some funds from the state and it could be considered response funds because we received funds for like the outhouses and the worst and washing stations that were put around the county or around the city. Um, so those funds, I think as we're managing the event, would stay with, with county management and being able to apply and communicate with state agencies to get those funds for systems. Um, short-term funds. What would you identify short-term funds as?
Was money made available for motel rooms, for temporary housing, for, um, even the cleanup portion of recovery is a little different than long-term, but we just need to delineate. So you're exactly right, kind of the management of the disaster from dump fees to outhouses to those kinds of things probably would be under county management. But then you have the short-term, what I would put in there is motel rooms, temporary housing, cleanup, um, food, um, household supplies. Red Cross was here for a while and handed the panel some of that, but then they left pretty quick and there was a, a void, um, uh, one week or two week to three month period of time dealing with all of the temporary, this is a temporary, but short-term issues that would happen during that period of time, that window. Long-term recovery tends to be rebuilding the house. Um, for example, most of the volunteers were willing to, uh, got clean, but then the reconstruction moves into another phase. So creating some delineation ahead of time as to who, who's going to handle what. And yeah, Melinda did a great job yesterday. There's a lot of things that we're focused mainly on housing and people and families, but communications and infrastructure and there are lots and lots of things to be taken into account and that the recovery, recovery plan could be beat down just a little bit.
Yeah. I, I think, I think, um, a plan with an annex that has a, a community and public, uh, partnership in it is, is great, you know? It, it puts everybody working towards the same goal. So that's that would be good. The only thing I would say there, just in our discussion, that would be good, and I'll talk with Melinda about it, but with the emergency manager about it is, um, just a definition, kind of delineate those short-term and the long-term needs that those, that funding would go towards.
Yeah, see, yeah, I have, I mean, the our name's Long-Term Recovery, but if there's no one, if there's not an entity that exists for that short-term recovery, then we either create one or we find one or we just, if we do it now, we're ready.
Yeah. Well, um, I, I think if I recall yesterday, there's not specifically a recovery annex in our plan right now. So it, it kind of becomes a fine line. Where do you, where do you start to say we're in recovery now? And at that point, this is the groups or the agencies or the entities that are going to start to work in that phase of, of an, of an emergency. So I think, um, while, while delineating between short and long-term needs and what would go towards that, I think, uh, recovery is just recovery period, you know? So I think we could probably put it in a plan that way, that the Long-Term Recovery Group is for recovery. It's just a title, you know, long-term is just a, is just a title, but its purpose is recovery. So.
Seems like typically during updates and presentations, we ask questions, but we don't really deliberate too much towards an action and it seems like emergency management should be involved in this discussion. They're a member of the Long-Term Recovery Group and so I'm wondering if we should maybe further down in the agenda where now discuss and possibly take action on directing the emergency management director to put a section in our emergency management plan that addresses those points and should we also discuss and potentially take action on the donation? They're asking about that, something that you brought up in the past and I know Commissioner Doro has some thoughts about that as well. And maybe it's not time sensitive or we can wait for her, but I just wanted to throw that out with consideration.
Yeah, speaking of time sensitivity, um, if we were to table this portion of it or to agendize this portion of it for our next county court session, a couple of weeks down the road, would that affect anything?
I would be willing to help you with language or different things if needed in the interim. So, or just questions and we'll help any way we can.
Oh, I think initially, you know, when I had brought it up initially, um, a couple of sessions ago, um, the court wanted to kind of know more about what, what funds have come in and how they've been used and helped people. So I think this helps define that, you know, that part of it. Um, and, uh, you know, just doing due diligence and fill in the background of where the money's going to be donated to or for purpose. So.
Commissioner Frank, thanks for, so those referrals and connections, we're a new group, so we've got to build our network. So the more referrals you can send us to, the better. And thanks for those who've sent our point.
The other thing that I wondered was if it would be appropriate for them to be involved with the FEMA natural hazard mitigation planning that we're doing. We, I think we have a meeting next Wednesday. Seems like a representative of their group should be at that table.
Yeah, we're not too far into it. Um, let's ask them when we're there at that meeting. Um, as, yeah, since we're not that far into it, it's only our second meeting. The first one was just an intro meeting, so let's ask them when we're there. Um, I don't know what their scope or what their, how, you know, if it's an all-partner type of a thing or if it's kind of a top-down type of a thing. So, but yeah, so we're in the process, county's in the process of renewing its natural hazard, um, plan and depending on what they say and what their, their facilitator that's facilitating the process for us, um, they may invite you guys to send somebody to be a part of that process. Anything else from your side?
That's in regards, so a meeting like that, we're in the learning phase, our learning curve steep, so the more we can be involved upfront, just to listen and learn and the better. Maybe we're not involved long-term, but just learning, you know, would help us a lot.
And with that particular exercise, it's a, it's federally mandated and it's a lot of box checking, but I don't think it would hurt for us at a local level to make it fit our needs so that it's not just going through their protocol to check the boxes. And I think that would probably be appropriate. It's just if you have, if you're not familiar with that plan or looked at it, it just is identifying natural hazards like snowstorms, floods, prioritizing on which ones are the most hazardous, but I think recovery should probably be a part of that conversation.
Um, I will say also for the record, the part that, and again, kind of switching hats for being a member of the, of that, uh, board. The organization, the way it was done was chose to put it under the hub because they already have a, a nonprofit status and long-term recovery groups around the state that we had talked to either form their own nonprofits or, or, uh, kind of, uh, what's the word? I don't know, looped in underneath an existing one, whatever. So the hub provides that financial oversight in the nonprofit realm of it. Um, so it is, it is a nonprofit for donations and, um, just to kind of specify the structure there a little bit.
Thank you to that group for the work being done and will continue to.
I don't have anything else, Commissioner? Uh, thank you very much for your time today. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we'll, we'll agendize this, this item or these two items. We'll discuss it more during the next, uh, county court session and get back to you on that.
You're good.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Um, moving on then, next update is from OSU Extension. Um, and Autumn?
I'll start and then I'll end up Autumn. Uh, so I just kind of wanted to give a quick rundown of things we've done this summer. It's been a pretty busy summer. Uh, Autumn started in April and since then she has done a tractor safety training with, uh, E Farm Bureau and with Abio Tool down at Crane. Um, we had our 4H Dog Invitational Show. I think it was the 46th year we've done that. Uh, I think it was fifth year in 2020 for COVID. Uh, then we also had the 4H Horse Show a few weeks ago. We had, uh, two folks, two, two kids qualified for the, uh, state ranch horse, uh, but definitely very able to attend because one's going to college and one is busy that weekend. Uh, we did a salmon canning class with the tribe, um, in July and we had two kiddos go to the 4H Summer Conference over in Corvallis for a week. And we had eight kids send static events to the state fair, which Autumn just took over yesterday to Salem. Um, and that's our big accomplishments in the last four or five months since Autumn started, which is, uh, quite a few things for somebody that just started the job.
That was eight static displays for the entries?
Yep. So I will kind of pass the overall.
It's all right. State Fair.
That was a lot of good stuff, but I think the tractor safety course is especially noteworthy because I know there's been times that that's lapsed in the county, so it's awesome.
I think Autumn had been on the job two or three weeks when they asked us to get that organized, so get the ground running.
Get it out.
Yep.
And I think somewhere in my scrapbook, I still have my certificate of completion for traffic, some traffic tractor safety course when I was even 14 or 15 or so.
That's a good way of saying we're being county jealous. You're able to drive a tractor safely.
Been there, done that.
I'm, I'm sure OSU has all kinds of multimedia resources for that, but if you need any PowerPoints with the safety, I think I have those. It's more valuable.
Thank you. Okay, um, I've been attending a lot of meetings, of course, with the big summer relating in the fair, and so I've been attending the 4H Association meetings, Harney County Youth Livestock Show and Auction Committee meetings, and the Fair Board meetings. Um, a lot of the logistics and a lot of the meetings are centered around how to make it work for this year, just because we're kind of in the significant phase of the building construction and what'll be available. Um, but I think we're getting it worked out. We have plans and we have contingency plans and then we have contingency, contingency plans. So we've got a lot, a lot of layers that we've got figured out. Um, registration for fair closed here last Friday. Um, we have quite a few youth registered for static. We only have three youth registered for our 4H Dog Program, so that is one of the things I'm going to work on promoting, was coming here to get more youth back into that. Um, for the livestock show and auction, we had 175 youth register. Of those, 108 are registered in 4H and 46 are registered in FFA, which leaves 21 kids in the open class. Uh, of those 21 kids, only 11 youth don't have a family connection of either 4H or FFA. And so the 4H Association at their last meeting voted that they would like me to, um, see if we can't if that show turned back into a 4H and FFA show. Basically, that means at the next livestock committee meeting, I'll be taking what the 4H Association voted on to them and see what they have to say about it and then we'll go from there. Um, as part of the logistics for it, I did go to Sage Country Barns and they are going to donate the use of one of their buildings for a fair office for, for H and the livestock show. Um, we had an old office there, but the construction company is currently using it, so we were able to make some adjustments. We've also went and talked to Girmans and they're going to donate the cut and wrap on two animals. One is Raleigh Wallace has donated a goat to the Oregon Make-A-Wish. Um, and we are going to do a fundraiser. That animal's going to be auctioned off at the at the livestock auction. It'll be the first animal. We'll auction the animal off and then we'll also do a paddle raise for additional donations and all that money will go towards Make-A-Wish for Harney County Youth specifically. Um, we did have a local youth who was granted a wish earlier this year and so just kind of trying to bring some more awareness to that. Uh, and then the other animal is, we have a youth who has a medical condition and will be unable to show due to their medical condition this year at fair. They did weigh in a steer. So the livestock committee voted that their sister will show their steer in the market classes and will auction it off and that money will still go to that family. Um, not so much as a donation, but they'll get all the money raised for that and Girmans was going to donate that as well. Let's see, we are also at fair. Um, Clay and I are going to do a kind of a canning 101 demonstration. So I think it's Thursday at four, but I don't remember for sure right off the top of my head. And then we've been working with the open static groups to try to figure out how to, um, incorporate 4H into some of the open static demonstrations. There's going to be a tent and a stage. This year, we may not have as much interaction as we want, but next year we're hoping to have 4H demonstrations, 4H youths giving presentations, um, maybe a fashion review, just kind of try to get 4H more involved during the fair itself. And let's see. Um, that's pretty much the fair update. Do you guys have any questions on that part of it?
Um, no, but it does sound like you've been pretty busy.
I keep myself busy.
And, and while we're kind of in between here, and just for the people online that may not know, recognize you or whatever, but if you can state your name.
Uh, I'm Autumn Tully Jackson. I'm the OSU Extension Agent for 4H here in Harney County.
Thank you.
Okay, um, future plans. So I have lists I've been making just because I haven't had a whole lot of time to plan for next year at this point, but once fair is over, we'll be able to focus on that a little bit more. Um, I do want to get organized. I was able to get Shawna with these all of her old electronic records and of course we have paper records, so there's a lot of stuff to go through to see what the program was, what events worked good for, what events we can bring back in the future. Um, and then I really want to focus on promoting 4H. We are uh, a pretty big organization in the community that does a lot of good. And so I really want to work on developing partnerships, specifically with the library, um, High Desert Partnership, the schools. I'd like to have regular, whether they're classes or demonstrations or something, I'd like to have an engagement with the schools, including the rural schools, because I think they've gotten left out of some of our 4H activities. So I'd like to make trips to do some sort of development with them. Um, and then the tribe, I think, is also a place where we can build some partnerships and do some outreach. Uh, one of the things I'd like to also promote is I know sometimes being a smaller rural area, we have trouble getting club leaders. They just can't make that larger commitment. But I would like to have kind of 4H in a day classes where youth can sign up and we can get one of our local uh, professionals or entrepreneurs to come and teach them or show them how to do something and kind of get some experience that way with a little bit less commitment from those adults that are volunteering. And then we are also going to be completing a needs assessment just to see what else is needed on the county and how we can help promote our youth. I had some others in my desk the other week. So I think that is kind of the plan for next year. Um, we'll also develop for, plan for some more events and stuff. Kind of like with tractor training, I know we want that to be an annual thing and the dog shows annual, but we're looking at having animal science days, um, some cupcake wars, just different events. Oh, sorry. Different events throughout the, or throughout the year. So that's what I have.
All right, great.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, it sounds like a very active program throughout the year with the different clubs and the different events and everything. So, um, thank you very much. Any questions for 4H Extension?
No, I'm just excited that we're going guns blazing now and I think the vision that your guys' department has for the future is exciting.
Well, I like to stay busy and I'm always open ideas. So if anybody has an idea or sees a need or think something would be neat to have, just need to reach out, stop by the office, let us know.
The thing I forgot to mention, sorry. We had our, uh, shooting sports competition a few weeks ago as well. So 4H Shooting Sports, uh, is an off-the-club, they're participating and, um, I don't think anybody qualified for nationals or state or anything, but.
No, I think we're just getting it figured out this year.
We are getting it, getting it going, so we have shooting sports as well.
Is that small caliber or shotgun or combination or?
Both, yeah. Yep. Uh, archery, shotgun, small caliber rifles, uh, air, air rifles.
Okay.
That's cool. Yeah. So if you're, you got any kids interested? So if you're, you got any kids interested in that, send them our way.
Um, is that gonna kind of run pretty much with the same calendar?
They do it up at the uh um shooting range, so we gotta wait till the snow knows um up there. But yeah, they run the spring, summer, fall, whenever they can get up there.
Okay, good.
Something I forgot to mention was during fair week, of course, the office will be closed, they and I will be at fair. Um, our official open days are Tuesdays and Fridays, but I am in the office a lot of the time, so. Just call and see if I'm there and stop by.
Alright, great. Alright, anything else? Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. Thank you for the update.
Thank you all.
Uh, next up for uh update is uh Justice Court Judge Richardson.
Um, Bradley Richardson, Justice of the Peace here, uh just thought I'd come out and give a little update for our department. Um, we're in the peak busy season right now, a couple reasons, it's travel, it's summer travel. Um, so a lot of highway patrol um or and within town patrol for that. With patrol, we're almost fully staffed with all of our law enforcement, Hines and the county, city of Hines and county are both full for patrolling. Um, Burns is full, but they have two of their officers are in the academy. They should be out January-ish with the holidays. And this is kind of the long stretch, it's a sixteen-week academy, and so when they go through holidays, it gets bumped because they have to take a week off for Thanksgiving. All those other fun holidays. Um, and then our troopers are just down one trooper, so they're still mostly fully staffed. I think they have five right now, including Sergeant Health, so that's a lot of bodies out on the road, um not just on the highways, but in town. I don't know if anybody else has noticed, but they're also patrolling the back streets a lot more. We've had a lot of complaints of reckless um dangerous behaviors on the back roads, so trying to carry that down. Uh, they're also really in full force on um ordinance violations too, which we handle upstairs for all county and both city municipalities. So um raises our caseload. Um, we track caseload from January one to today's date, like to for like a calendar year, not a fiscal year. Um, so today's date compared to last year, we are up four hundred and forty-five cases from last year. Um, we're actually spot on match the entire year last year from same as today's date from January of this year. So in twenty twenty-four, the total case number. Was one thousand three hundred and eighty-two, and that's where we're at today with cases, so three hundred and eighty-two. Um, I'm not sure why twenty twenty-four was so low, because in twenty, we're up two cases compared to twenty twenty-three's, January to today's date. Um, so I suggest, I guess that we'll probably track that closer. Um, the exciting news with that is that we did write the highest um county fine share check since two thousand eighteen. And so just by tracking with twenty twenty-three, it seems like we're, the turnaround is doing better. With turnaround, we're trying to get re um re-certified with a collections agency. They haven't used one that seems since like twenty twenty-one, um when Judge Holmes was up there with a different clerk. And so it looks like all of our contracts have expired with them. And so I'm trying to read through the previous interesting note-taking um from the old collections agency in the process. So that we can get reinstated with the collections agency. Um, we have no teeth in the game when it comes to uh ordinances, non-traffic violations, except for to send them to collections. If it's a traffic violation, we can suspend their license, um which tends to incite people to pay their fines and get on a payment plan. Uh, but if it's not a traffic violation, there's not much enforcement we can do. Um, so I'd like to get us back in collections so that we can prompt people to continue to get their violations. Um, we're not a revenue source, we're not there just to collect money, but it's part of the process of justice court, so. Um, there's that. We did get lead certified, so we do run all leads in-house now, spend like that for a few months now. Um, so that's nice, we're not bogging down dispatch to run thirteen or two bits a year plus, so we're doing that. Um, we've gotten a server, we had to get a server for an IP for to get lead certified. We did request a full server. Um, we're not on access with the county server. And so we would like to be able to digitalize all of our case files. Um, instead of having to run to the basement every time someone's making a request and digging through boxes of boxes of stuff. Um, so we'd like that, and then just to be able to have it more mainstream with small claims, evictions and old misdemeanor cases that are still open. We still have several warrants that are open under mic where um that are from old misdemeanor cases. And we stopped taking misdemeanors in like two thousand and eleven, so they're pretty old, but they're still active. And so we're also working with the DA's office on how to mitigate some of those. Uh, because we don't have it to, if someone were to get picked up on a warrant from an old case, we would have to court wind an attorney and things like that. And we don't have that in our budget to do that any longer, um because we don't hold those cases as a typical case. Um, so we're working with the DA's office on how we would mitigate that if something were to happen and to review these old warrants and cases to see what can we do to get them closed. Um, with the server, we'd also, we have three computers now, we'd like to sync them where we can update files that we send to other people in like our um. Documentation, but we still don't actually have a server, we just have an IP address. Um, we've been working with IT since about January to get it, and I'm just not sure what's going on. Um, it seems like there's some issue after another for that, so we're still trying to work on that. Um, everything else is going pretty smooth. I have fall conference coming up in September and that'll be out for three days for. And then my judicial training in October, that'll be off for two weeks for. Um, but Ms. Hop will be upstairs and being able to handle anything that comes into today and I'm always. That's what I thought.
Um, server, did we budget for that this year?
Um, when it was talked about with IT, it was not an additional charge from them to get us a server. And so it was not budgeted because they were told us it was no additional charge.
Okay. Um. And then how about your, your IP address and stuff? Is there gonna be uh certificate fees and stuff on that?
They didn't say it was. They said it was all included in what our normal monthly payout to them is in our IT services. I asked those questions when we requested it, um but we haven't been paying any extra for IP address. Because we have a a specific IP address for Justice Court to be able to become lead certified.
Okay.
Um, because that comes off of my IP. Um, and so they indicated it was no additional charge for anything. I just, so I really don't know why we can't. We're not moving forward with the rest of the process, so.
Okay, well, let us know if you need any help on that. Um. See if there was something else I was gonna ask, but I'll think of it in a minute.
What are the three most common ordinance violations that you see?
Ordinance, um, well, so Burns is doing parking violations, so we're seeing some of those. But mostly we're seeing like nauseous weeds and vegetation, um and then like junk is what they're calling it. Um, and then dogs, dogs are the number one. It's under dangerous or nuisance animal is dogs, and that is county and both city municipalities, that we get a lot of dog cases. Um, it's actually been quite the uptake this year for dog cases. There's been a very low tolerance when dogs are acting out and off-leash. Um, I mean, it's been combined force with all the law enforcement that they're not tolerating that anymore. We've had several children almost, but we've had children, but we've had adults, but we've had people on bikes, but we've had goats, animals killed by dogs. And so we've almost had law enforcement, but um there's been several dangerous and nuisance dogs.
And that's just within the municipalities, within the cities?
So the county uses, um, anytime your dog is outside of your property, it's considered a nuisance animal. Uh, and so if it's outside of that and then acting in a dangerous behavior per ORS, like it can be classified as a dangerous dog, and there's four different levels. Um, level one is like a warning it like growled or barked at someone, and then it can go all the way up to like attacking a um animal or a human, and that would be level four. Um, typically, level fours are then um euthanized um as their, or rehomed somewhere where it'd be a safer place for them. Um, but they, the county isn't forcing that as well. We've had several actually out of the county. We've four, I'm afraid, what about maybe? They obviously have some.
So we just had a conversation or a meeting with the the county and and Burns and Hines. Um, the uh previous location where we were boarding impound animal that um. Because of staffing and and logistics and whatnot, they chose not to to continue with that anymore. So they've contracted with another entity, another um source here in town to board the animals. And we all, as a group, of uh Burns and Hines and the county, agreed to to standardize our our. Uh, impound fees and and processes so that it wasn't different from city to city to county. Um, and and actually, in the past, the county had been paying for impounds and not recouping those costs from the owner.
And part of that's because we don't have enforcement on that. Um, and so like I can't enforce payment. I can't like suspend a license or do anything like that to force someone to pay their ticket on that, which then was part of that, coming back to the county for those fees. Um, but with the collections agency, I'm hoping that'll.
Well, in our agreement that we sign uh impound fees, fines will be something different, but impound fees. We all agreed um on two hundred and twenty dollar impound fee for the first three days. Uh, um, and then after that, it would be five hundred dollars after or up to five days. And then after five days, um animals by statute can be euthanized. It's not the intent of of any of the municipalities or the county to euthanize. And we do have a uh a shelter out of Ontario that services this area that will take the animals then after five days if they're unclaimed. And and part of those fees are gonna go towards uh like fifty dollars an animal initially. That will help offset the cost to that shelter for for feeding and sheltering. And then at the end of the year, we talked about any funds that were left over in those, in those accounts. That would then be made of an annual donation to the, to them as well. And it's all funded by the individuals whose animals.
Got out.
Yeah, thought out or whatever, so.
Um, I'm not sure if this is the route you guys talked about. I see a lot of like restitution on top of a fine amount. Um, and that gets paid out separately on our end too, so if it's like a restitution, your dog bit a dog, it went to the vet. Restitution would be for that other dog's vet bill.
Uh huh.
Um, and so that's also paid on top of the fine amount, and their separated restitution is always paid first. No matter how much of a payment you're making to the court, typically people make payment plans when it becomes a higher amount. Um, so then that would be a monthly check to the restitution, and then once that's fully paid off, then the fine would start to be paid on as well. Um, I'm not sure how you guys set it up for those fees to be paid, but that could be something.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't discuss, we didn't discuss those, because those were outside, obviously would be.
Yeah.
A judicial decision, so we just were totally looking at just boarding fees, impound fees themselves.
And I think we can separate it as a fee versus an restitution versus a fine in our system that we can set that out like that.
But we were gonna have, but so the way we had it set up is the individual, the owner, would have to pay that boarding, the impound fee.
Uh huh.
Before they could get their animal back.
Okay.
So so it's separate from some from the, from the fine side of it.
Yeah. Um, I know that the county and the city, some cities have ordinances for their dogs, like Hines and Burns both have an ordinance that they follow. Typically, Burns follows their ordinance, which is a five hundred dollar fine for dangerous dog and nuisance animal. Um, versus the county, they usually follow the ORS, which is a two sixty-five fine. Um, so I know they've also been talking about like becoming on the same page for fine amounts too.
Yeah, that's gonna be between the sheriffs.
Yeah, it's all, it's just kind of like discussion, if the dog's in town, it could be a five hundred dollar ticket, but if the dog's two miles outside of town, it could be a two sixty-five. Just because of jurisdiction, um the county doesn't have their own ordinance that outlines what that fine amount is. They just go off the statute, which is a two sixty-five class B versus like city of Burns has an ordinance that outlines what the fine amount is. So in the most different ways, so.
Alright, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you for the update.
Yep.
Alright, next up is a library intern presentation. Now I have a video queued up. Do you wanna play that first?
No, I'd like to introduce Camden Moss. I'm Cheryl from the library. Camden uh has been working for us this summer, he's up to almost about two hundred hours. Uh, his position was funded by a grant from the Oregon State Library. And he has checked out every, I don't know, area of the library. He's been in the western room, he's been in the maker space, but he was invaluable during our summer reading program. In which we had over eight hundred people all summer, so uh that is what his um presentation is about, the summer reading program. And he also did a connected learning project, which was required by the grant, which he can describe to you after we look at the video.
Okay. We'll get back now. Alright, last stop Sharon and we speak to it, sorry about that. I was trying to get it bigger so it'd fill the screen.
Camden, were you responsible for the Dungeons and Dragons?
Yes.
I think that was really well received by the youth that attended. It might not have been a lot of kids, but I think it was one of the really excited about it.
Nice, nice presentation.
Thank you.
Uh, very first question, what grade are you in?
I'm going to be junior year.
Junior year. Um, this kind of stuff and these kind of experiences, some of it, they refer. Um this kind of stuff and these kind of experiences, some of it they refer to as hard skills and soft skills. And I can see that you've got a lot of both during your internship, so please continue.
Um. My connected learning project I did this year was Dungeons and Dragons. I I felt like in Burns and Hines, we do not have a lot of activities for kids who are around thirteen or not. They, it's a lot of them are just stuck at home or just hang out with each other. So I felt like having an activity other kids can do would bring a lot to the community. Um. I ran it since July second, every week on Wednesday. And it's been a great time. I plan on running it after Rangership ends. Um as much as I can, I do have school coming up, so see how far I can get. Thank you.
You're going into your junior year, so you still have a lot of time to figure things out, but how do you feel like this internship will better prepare you for your career choices?
It. It helped me, the library has a wide array of activities. Um I always planned on going to attack this field and being able to do stuff in the maker space especially. Helped me a lot. I also did a lot of data entry, which wasn't always the funnest, but also helped me learn. How to calculate numbers and do all the this is statistical stuff indeed that I can not.
Good. What would you say was your single biggest takeaway?
Running a library is hard. Um it takes a lot of work, a lot of planning. Sometimes we had, I think, three different performers cancel on us this year. So it takes a lot of trying to stay ahead without falling behind, uh let not let people down.
Good, good. Worth it? Do it again?
It was, I really enjoyed it. I don't think I'd do it again because I also want to try to branch out and do other things and get more experience.
Very well spoken.
Let me ask what his career goal is?
Tech.
Tech.
Uh tech, I didn't hear that, sorry.
I mean, more specifically, I plan on going to aerospace engineer.
Wow. And you have a lot of some competence. That's good.
Uh huh.
Very good. Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time this summer. Thank you for the presentation. Did a good job. All right. Uh let me see then, moving on.
Okay.
Um old business flood mitigation planning. Um. Did you have any updates as far as any recent discussions or anything with the Corps of Engineers or any other? Um I I kinda, I know you, the brand and he he mentioned uh Mc- McMullen for planning. Mentioned last county court um about taking the work that the engineers had done last time. Taken it off, dusting it off and and reevaluating that work and adding to it and whatnot. Um. I I'm not sure exactly what proposals are in there, uh because I haven't had a chance to get into it yet. Um I just wanna make sure that we don't, for lack of a better term, pigeonhole as to what's there. That to to consider what other opportunities or possibilities might be myself.
Well, and this is, it's kind of skipped around on the agenda, but I think it's coming up organically, so it's all right. We did talk to Klein Schmidt. And they would be interested in taking all the data we got from this latest flood event and reincorporating it. They were gonna put together a proposal of what they'd like to do and a sort of a budget for that. And I was hoping it would be to us by today, but we haven't received it yet. But I was surprised to find that if, to me, if we think about we have three million dollars for flood mitigation. It it seemed reasonable that it would be well under a hundred thousand dollars. More in the sixty to eighty thousand dollar range probably, without having seen the figures yet for them to reevaluate it. And we also asked that they could also add as one of the alternatives to study. Uh pump, pump station slash aquifer recharge. They've been doing a lot of work with that in central Oregon. And I have some contact information for a person in Crook County who has led, led their efforts on that. But that's where we're at with the the Klein Schmidt stuff. I also reached out to the Wetlands Collaborative and uh a water consultant. And they already had their agenda set for their next meeting, which is next week. But the one following that, one of our big discussion items is going to be flood mitigation. Because a lot of those groups within that group or that group itself are looking at doing projects, which could coincide with some of the alternatives outlined in Klein Schmidt. For example, Ducks Unlimited is looking at some projects up around Foley. And they have different access to funds than we do. And they are good at getting funding from the state and implementing projects. So can barely help to get on the agenda for, I think, that for the September meeting for the Wetlands Collaborative. And we'll talk about that a little more in depth. And I'll reach out to those central Oregon people about the aquifer recharge. But when Klein Schmidt gets us something, then we'll have to take action and decide if it's something we want them to pursue. They were really excited. Part, partially because they were excited to see how accurate their um modeling was from three years ago compared to the flood event that we had. And so they'll be able to even fine tune their modeling more. But one of the things they looked at, and we also asked them to put more of an emphasis on this, was every one of their alternatives, when they did that twenty twenty one report. Took into account what that would do for aquifer recharge if they were to. Oh, if they were to change how that flow goes under Foley Drive. Uh was one of the alternatives. And just that one alternative, I wanna say is theorized to increase aquifer recharge by six thousand acre feet a year. And so.
Instead of letting it escape into the field on the other side of Foley, holding it, holding it on the other side so that it has a chance to naturally dissipate?
It would widen it and slow it down. And also with some of those, with some of those mitigation alternatives, I don't wanna keep looking at the map, nobody else can see it, but. A lot of those alternatives have to do with Foley Drive and north of the city. But they would distribute that water and get more acres wet. So it might not only be advantageous to our aquifer, but for agriculturalists and land users. It would also spread that water out more and it wouldn't, it wouldn't mess with existing water rights or anything like that. It would just be a more effective use of the water, so. Think that's. Look at my notes, yes. I think that's about it. And we also, the. The regional director for the Fish and Wildlife Service that oversees refuges was out a week or two ago. And we had a conversation about the, about aquifer recharge around the lake. Because there are times when the lake, the lake needs to naturally fluctuate. But past its maximum capacity, past a certain point, all it's doing is flooding its neighbors. And so we had some discussions about if we could do some of these mitigation programs, which. As far as flood mitigation, that would really have more to do with just having an available outlet. Because obviously if the lake is past capacity, the water hasn't nowhere to go and affects the city and the municipalities. But it, they are not completely opposed to the idea of doing something further on the, further towards the middle of the basin. It could be advantageous to the municipalities and help the refuge as well.
Is there any, is there any portion of the of the work that Klein Schmidt did in our, in our survey and and proposal? That Ducks Unlimited and other entities could could utilize?
I, well, actually Tony Spakar had a copy of it on his computer. And so when I had that initial conversation with Ducks Unlimited, he shared it with them and they're gonna have their engineers take a look at it. And see if there are any of those alternatives that align with what the projects that they have proposed. And so not only would we have Klein Schmidt looking at it again, but we'll have a set of engineers from a nationally recognized organization looking at it.
Yeah, good. Cool, good.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Um I just read an article, I think it was on the internet, about the demand as A I is more and more incorporated into everything. It's gonna demand a lot more water. A I takes water and that's why uh Primeville is working on their recharge for Google. So they kind of forecasted that as everybody gets on board with A I, we could be praising ourselves another water issue, not just us, but the country. Water issues. So I think recharge is extremely important. And it can, it may can happen twelve months out of the year to some extent, when we do have excessive water flowing in our streams or accumulating in the lake.
Question? Um this, you recall Bill Seat discussed this a lot at uh their last meeting. We had uh uh pictures of the Foley event. And so I have a question in terms of retaining the water uh or slowing it down, going under Foley. And then backing it up. How would that affect residents like what used to be Ruthie's and those on the other side?
Well, the, the water that comes under Foley and into the field there north of North Broadway. It has over the last couple of years, well, we back up, there is a a culvert, there is a culvert there that's supposed to take that water and dump it into the channel of the river.
Right.
But but the the elevation of it, the the water has to get pretty high in that field before it starts to move in into the river. And normally the river is already high enough and beyond above that culvert. So if they open it up, all it's gonna do is allow water to flow from the river channel into the field itself and and make a bad situation worse. So they've been pumping the last several years when we've had high water, they've been pumping from that field into the river channel. Um. To help mitigate and keep that water from backing up further north to Stan Cliff and beyond Stan Cliff.
Uh huh.
Um, holding it, holding that water on the other side of Foley. Um. Would help mitigate the amount of water that's in that field because it wouldn't have a chance to flow under the, in through the culvert there from, from um. The west side of Foley to the east side into the field there.
Uh huh.
So.
I'm just reacting to conversations I had with Ruthie at one time where they kept getting flooded out year after year after year because of the water being diverted back down her.
Well, that's partially that that river channel is designed that way, though. It's high on the west bank and low on the east bank. And her house is on the east bank. So when the, when the water level got high in that river, it was designed to flow to the east. I'm pretty sure when they originally designed that, they weren't expecting people to start building houses off off to the east side of the river channel. Um and Ruthie's is right on the, that house is right on the river channel. So yeah, they, every year they were sandbagging right along behind their house there to to keep water out. Um. That was just their mechanism for overflow of the way they designed that channel back then. I I think part of our process has gotta be to be able to uh clean the channel. And lessen restriction, res- you know, within the channel, whether that's, whether that's trees and and vegetative debris. Or or other uh material that's been dumped into the channel. That that we need to clear up that that flow to allow less restriction and and better flow um through there. And that will help because that'll help keep the river at a level where it doesn't overtop that east bank.
Yeah, because you have an issue is not just with the flooding, but with septic systems.
Yeah. Uh.
And they also consider putting in some, I'll just call them mini dams, so that the water has to slow down a little bit rather than just ripping through that area because.
That's an idea that's been discussed up up canyon.
Yeah.
Yeah, just control efforts up canyon that that it may not hold water year round, but when the water comes down, it has a place to hold it and release it at a slower rate.
Yes.
But that's been discussed, talked about. You know, all the way, I think, I think on the table right now, there's been all the way from a reservoir up the canyon, which would hold and control water at a much bigger scale.
Uh huh.
To smaller little retaining um. Dykes or dams or whatever.
Uh huh.
Um to dispersal, you know, once it gets down, you, that's why I'm I'm kinda. I think we need to do something more than just finding ways of dispersing it more efficiently, which is one element in the valley itself. Um I'd like to see some kind of storage element. Um and, you know, pie in the sky, if that's a reservoir, then you know, that leads to recreation and other, other benefits to it. So but that's, that's a big project too. Um I was gonna mention the, the um, whatever the engineers' fees are, like you mentioned. There's a possibility, we're not supposed to get these funds until late twenty seven from the state. So if we need to and should advance that work and 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 determine what project or or uh goal that we're gonna come out of it. That I, just like the city is doing, I think there's a possibility that we could probably get a loan from Business Oregon and then repay that loan once we do receive those funds. So that way we're not waiting for two years to start doing any work.
Uh huh. And that's, that's been a a big fear all along because everything moves at a snail's pace in government. And if with the fires that we had last year, if we have another big snow this year and no flood mitigation measures are put in place, it's gonna do the exact same thing. And there's a Wetlands Collaborative field trip maybe next week. But I noticed that two, we are gonna visit two different sites where that group already has some mitigation projects planned. Which hopefully that means planned to be completed this year. And I think one of them does have to do with some check dams and it it might be a renovation of Five Mile Dam. But I'm not sure because that belongs to the irrigators, but there, there is some of that proposed. And I also, I agree with you on storage. I think big storage or or even a flood control structure that doesn't store but cuts the peak off it is gonna be really expensive. And especially if you go the storage route, it's gonna take a lot of education to get landowners to understand that it will give them longer access to the same amount of water. And won't impede their water rights. And I think that's gonna be a long process. So I hope that anything we do between now and then are measures that, we won't just be nickel and dime in it. So that if five or ten years in the future, we do decide a reservoir is appropriate. The measures and the things that we spend money on now are just gonna enhance that work, not be a waste of, you know, redundancy.
Yeah, I, I, I I think storage is the way to to solve the lean years against the fat years. You know, it it might take several years for a reservoir to fill up. But after that, in a lean water year, you have water to to get to the producer, you know, right uh uh. Yeah, for production.
It's, it's gonna be, it's a really complicated issue. And one thing I honestly don't know enough about is most places that have reservoirs, like if you look up in Yumitala County, they also irrigate out of canals. We don't irrigate out of canals as they do, not the same thing. We have wild flooding, which is really important to our ecosystems here. And I don't know if you don't have a big excess push of water, but I I would think that you could still have, you could engineer the right push of water. To benefit the ecosystems and still hold those peak waters back, but.
Yeah, I don't think we have to have a flood every year in order to get water out into those fields. You just gotta have enough water and distribution.
Yeah.
All right, um. Next topic, economic development, next steps. Um again, Commissioner Doro not being able to attend today, um I think I'd rather keep that on hold until she has a chance to view the uh, the meeting video. And um we can discuss it together. But I think I myself, I think our meeting was very well attended by those agencies and organizations that that uh can lend to that process. And um identified resources that are already out there.
I agree, and I. I agree, and I think it's important to note that we, at least I learned a little bit more about some of the local entities that are already doing a lot of the work that I think we had envisioned for economic development. So if we do take our time to make sure and make the right choice for how to allocate our, our scarce funds, I don't think it's the end of the world because a lot of those needs are still being met in the community.
The, the immediate needs, there's resources for the immediate needs of small business and entrepreneurship here in, here in Harney County. So if, if we take a little bit of time to, to make sure, like you say, the, the right approach, there's, nobody's going to suffer from it. New business. And Treasurer just stepped out. There she is.
I needed to get another person to come.
So new business, Fair Manager and Treasurer request for handling the fair entertainment, fair's entertainment.
So the, the Fair Manager had a request to pay entertainment, which is like local entertainment in cash, and it could be as small as fifty dollars up to a hundred dollars per entertainer, from what I was told. I checked with John Russell, our auditor, to see if that would be okay as long as we had a process in place, and he said yes. He said for nominal amounts, it's, it's not an issue, and he does see it done in other counties. So the entertainment, I believe we had budgeted about twenty-five hundred dollars total. And so what would happen is I would obtain the cash, transfer that over to the Fair Manager, and then as, when the entertainers come and after their performance, they'd be able to pay them in cash. And they're going to keep a, a record of, you know, who, when, how much, and then have that individual sign for it and, and bring that accounting back to me. And so John also suggested that we discuss this with the court and have it in the minutes and that it's approved, that we're just going to handle that business that way. Since that conversation, the Fair Manager also reached out to me about vendors. So she would like to do the same thing with vendors. And I believe what had happened is they were, their fair is charging the vendor a hundred dollar deposit. But if the vendor then comes and participates at the fair, then that hundred dollar deposit was refundable. That money got deposited, and so now in turn, the cash is needed to pay those vendors back. And so I added that to my AP request, and the total is about thirty-five hundred dollars. And it would be the same kind of accounting where we have a list and that individual would sign for it.
So, so the proposal now, and we spoke about this in the past or earlier, but the proposal that, that is beyond entertainment, you know, being able to write a check or cash for entertainment, but now it's expanded to repaying the deposits of. And, and is this, is this part of the discussion that we had for a checkbook or is this just cash?
This is just cash, this is separate conversation. The court would allow, I'd like to just touch on that because I did speak to the auditor about it yesterday before you left.
So on staying on the cash topic, then it would just be a petty cash dispersal that we'd give to the Fair Manager? And they would manage that cash and turn back what's left or whatever?
Yeah, she'd turn over what wasn't spent, and then I'd have an accounting of what was given to the entertainment.
Some kind of a ledger of, as to twenty dollars here, fifty dollars there, a hundred dollars there, whatever.
And it's similar to how the premiums are handled currently. So I provide a certain number of cash, and then I get the accounting back of what was distributed. And then any remaining cash is brought back and re-descended.
I, I don't have a problem with it as long as the appropriate or necessary documentation comes back with it so that it zeros out at the bottom.
As long as there's an appropriate accounting of it, that's fine. What, what constitutes a nominal amount? Does that depend on the situation? I'm just curious.
Well, because I had, when I questioned John, I just said dollar amounts are anywhere from like fifty dollars to a hundred dollars, and then he said, well, for nominal amounts. So I'm assuming it's a hundred dollars or under, but I could verify with him. A, a, a small amount, but a small amount could vary in someone's eyes.
Well, yeah, I was just, I didn't know if that was an actual, actually, accounting definition of what constitutes a nominal.
Are you going to, are you going to Google that, John?
Just to see what, just to see what Webster says.
And they're not paying that entertainment very much.
Well, I will say this is not, this is like local. Yes, I'm sorry, yes, local entertainment, but, but the, they do have like some larger entertainment planned for Friday and Saturday night. Now that, those vendors will be receiving a check payment.
So nominal, N-O-M-I-N-A-L. I get it right? First off, it talks about being related to, by name or relating to interest, but then the last item five, it says being according to plan. And I think that would fit best is according to plan. It was, it's planned to pay somebody fifty dollars for, for entertainment. It's planned that you're going to have to return a hundred dollars of a deposit. So it's, it's, it's a nominal amount that's according to the plan, and the plan is these expenses.
It's an accounting word.
Yeah, that, that's the way I would, that's the way I would take it. And under that, under that understanding, nominal makes sense. You know, it's, it's a plan, it's, it's a planned expense that you're going to have to, you're going to have to pay for entertainment or a refund. Yeah, yeah.
While it is not typical for the chair or the judge to make a motion, I would defer to you because I have a feeling that your wording of the motion would be more accurate of what Treasurer.
Would you, are you, are you needing a motion out of it?
Well, honestly, that I don't know. I just, John just said that I should, we should present this idea to the court and that the court understand it and okay it, approve it basically. So I don't know if that means that we talk about it in the minutes and you guys are in agreement with that plan or if.
Well, what's, what's your thoughts on it, too? I don't think, as the Treasurer, I want to make sure that your thoughts are on the record, too.
I think just to keep everything in line, that a motion would be good.
Well, but I mean, in, in regards to doing this, though, your thoughts on the, on the cash, yeah.
At first I was hesitant, just because of cash, I just want to make sure that the, the, the security and the guardrails are in place. And, and I believe that they will be, and so I know that they need to operate in a way that makes it efficient for them, so.
Well, with that, with that in mind, then it can't hurt, it's not, it's under new business. We don't really have it delineated for action, don't know if it needs to be. But I will make a, a motion to allow the dispersal of, of a cash, a dispersal of cash to the Fair Board for nominal expenses to be paid for things such as entertainment and refunds. Does that work?
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded as, because I'm not going to try and say that again, to allow the, the Fair Board, to allow a cash dispersal to the Fair Board. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye, aye? And opposed, hearing none, motion carries. So.
So the, the next topic, if I may, would be life check. So statute does state that the Fair Board may have a checkbook, basically, to, to pay entertainment, whatever they may need for the fair. And the county used to do it that way. And then something changed and the county took it back. When I spoke, spoke with John yesterday about it, he said that he would be willing to come speak in regard to that, to the court as a whole in December or when he comes to speak about the audit. And I said that that would be welcome. We briefly talked about certain things about what would be required and setting up some parameters and having that be in an MOU so that the guidelines are there from the beginning. And, and that's how I would like to go forward with it. So that gives us almost a whole year to get it done and handled, and, and they could have their own checkbook.
Do they have a checkbook now?
No, we do have a separate checking account that was used in the past for rodeo payouts, but that has changed with, with the rodeo secretary, I mean, not now.
I think right now, because we have been, although not very efficiently or timely, have been working on the NMOU for the, for the county and the Fair Board. So I think it's, it's an opportune time that if we're going to do that kind of stuff, that those kind of provisions would be added to that MOU. So that each side understands their responsibilities and. I think we could probably even include topics in there like the cash, petty cash dispersals and, and documentation, and then we'll go along with those.
Because kind of my thought is if, if, if this is what we go to, like all of those things would then fall with that entity, I mean, it would become, it would become separate, like an accounting that would come back to the court. And John talked like on a quarterly basis, and then on a monthly basis, like the bank reconciliation come to me as the, the other entities, Justice Court, and those kind of things.
I mean, I think a checking account, unlike cash dispersals, that it's, it's a handwritten identification of what cash was used for. Yeah, I don't know, do you, so do you envision like the cash dispersal? If you're paying a, a vendor, whether it's entertainment or whatever, a fifty dollar fee, that some kind of a receipt would go along with that to the individual? To the vendor? That would accompany then a ledger that would come back?
Yeah, there's got to be an accounting piece to it, I would think. They could send it for like fifty dollar items, I would think, like some kind of a sheet with a list of the vendors, and they could sign for the amount of cash that they receive.
The vendor itself could sign? Yeah, and if the vendor has some kind of an ID number of some sorts?
Well, so if, if they, I mean, this is where it becomes a greater conversation, that if they do end up with their own checkbook, those items will not be entered into our accounting system. They would have their own playbook system, do their own reconciliation. We would just see that along with them having like their own tax ID number, so it's separate from the county, but the county still does have fiscal oversight, as John explained it to me, so that's why.
Yeah, and whether we, whether we have that documentation in our files or they maintained it themselves, which would probably be just as easy for them to maintain it. But should there be need for an audit of, or whatever of some type, that you can look at this ledger entry, so to speak, on a, on a form, a handmade form, that fifty dollars went to XYZ, and then any supporting documentation would be that with that as well?
Yeah, and I think their, like, their checkbook would be subject to like our audit, like, like the other entities are, like, they would just bring it, auditors go through that to make sure that it is reconciled and it's checked off by another set of eyes.
Checking, checking accounts have a lot of documentation and auditing that goes along with it, you know? Who the check was written to, who cashed it, so to speak, even, and even, even copies of canceled checks can be received. Cash is easier and it just disappears, you know? So, so a checkbook, I think there's enough checks and balances in a checking account that, that a checking account would be okay. It's the cash side of things that would concern me more than.
I will say, if they, if we go this route, I mean, they, they may still handle things that way for the ease of it. And like John explained, he, he sees that in, in, in a few of the counties that they audit in Idaho, but where it's, it's standard practice for cash for those nominal amounts. So even with their own checkbook, they still may be exchanging cash.
Yeah, yeah, it's two separate, I, I'm envisioning it as two separate, yeah. I'm, I'm just saying that, that I, I don't have a problem with the checking account myself. The cash side of it needs a couple more checks and balances on it.
Did you say they were running it into program them to keep that works? Cur- currently, the, the fair account is, is part of our accounting system. So if, if the check is written, we enter it into our accounting system. If, if we go this route, that, that re-change, almost likely change. Into it would be, it basically give you everything, we can check register your bank reconciliations and categorizing, categorizing all your expenses. Yeah. To, to explain a little further, like John mentioned, like the Fair Board would have their budget, and then so like our, our fair budget would look completely different as well. We wouldn't have all those line items. Because that would all be run through, through theirs.
Yeah, because it wouldn't be anything to draw down and be all out of one, or one line, so to speak, yeah. Provides them with more autonomy, ease of doing business. Yeah, I, I mean, my point being is there's still a sub-entity of the county and the county still holds the liability. But with the right precautions or checks and balances, I don't, I'm fine with it myself.
I think it's something we should work, work towards, which is going to take some time.
Obviously something that's going to get established after this fair season because there's not time to kick all that in now. All right. Anything else? Anything else? All right, moving on then, next topic is home health and hospice resolution, twenty twenty-five dash eighteen, unexpected occurrence. In the matter of appropriating funds due to an unexpected occurrence or condition in regard to Home Health and Hospice Fund two fifty-one. This being the twentieth day of August twenty twenty-five and a day set aside for regular meeting of Harney County Court and their being President William James Hart, Harney County Judge. So Commissioner Doro's not here, do we need to redo this?
I think before the, the last one, it was signed absent. So the verbiage was the same when she was absent before, so.
Was it? Okay.
I mean, I can gladly read.
Yeah, I mean, it just, the verbiage says being present, and if Commissioner Doro's not present. So do we take her out of that first sentence? And Commissioner Rob, County Commissioner Rob Frank, whereas ORS two ninety-four point three three eight allows for the appropriation of funds when an unforeseen occurrence or condition which could not be seen, could not be foreseen at the time of the preparation of the budget or could not have foreseen a pressing necessity for the expenditure occurs, and whereas an unforeseen occurrence or condition has occurred to with Harney County Home Health and Hospice, beginning fund balance was more than anticipated by a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, and a need for building maintenance has been recognized. And whereas this fund was not anticipated during, this funding was not anticipated during the preparation of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. And then does that need to be twenty-five, twenty-six? Budget? Twenty-five, twenty, twenty-six? Twenty five, twenty twenty six.
We need Commissioner Doros, she's our. Our words sniffer.
Yeah.
We need to change that?
Yeah.
Okay, did you just fix it for me? Uh, well, I think fix the first error.
Therefore, be it resolved that the following category appropriation be adjusted and approved for expenditure in twenty. Then it says twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Home Health Hospice Fund two five one, beginning balance, two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Increase of twenty five thousand and materials and supplies. Balance of two hundred and seventy eight thousand, seven hundred and forty two, an increase of twenty five thousand. So we are appropriating two hundred or twenty five thousand dollars to the beginning fund balance. And then we're appropriating it to materials and supplies. Uh, done and dated this twentieth day of August twenty twenty five.
So does that mean that the beginning balance? Was. Seven.
Do you have all the communication email so that? Now, this figure. This was their actual. And I provided it and our budgeted figure was was two hundred. So we budgeted that they would have a carryover of two hundred thousand. And the actual was three forty one.
Three forty one, but if we're increasing their beginning balance to two twenty five. There's still going to be seventy thousand dollars or or something.
Right, so that money, that money will just sit. In their fund and then it can be appropriated. Next budget cycle. There's um, rules that if we appropriate more than ten percent of their. Expenditures, then we have to do a supplemental and so. Um, Matt was fine with his budget and just was asking for these repairs to the or. Updates to the building, painting and flooring. So we're only appropriating that, what what he needs.
So towards the end of the year, Home Health and Hospice received. Some. Payment dispersal from Medicare, I think it was payments, that they weren't anticipating. So it put their beginning fund balance a lot higher than what we were budgeted. And. Having those dollars available. For appropriating them for the maintenance use. Any further discussion? I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash eighteen in the matter of appropriating funds due to. One more time. Let's take the extra move up.
Do you do?
Do do two?
I apologize. I feel like when I sent the email out that I was hope that everybody would look at it and catch those beforehand.
That's where we're missing Commissioner Dora.
I know.
Okay, so you want to take do? Is that the final final?
Yeah, I believe so. I missed it on my first reading.
I think we all missed it.
Okay, resolution twenty twenty five dash eighteen in the matter of appropriating funds due to unexpected occurrence or condition. In regard to Home Health Hospice Fund two fifty one, as discussed. Any further discussion? Or you got a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Resolution to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash eighteen, any further discussion? All favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? And opposed, hearing that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, and I don't thank you too. Like, so you get the work done?
Alright, and. Next topic is solar. Well, Klein Schmidt, we we kind of already covered, do you have anything else from that? So we already covered Klein Schmidt update, uh, solar fees. So I tasked the the building department director to. Kind of look around our neighboring counties and see where where other counties were at with their. With their solar fees, sighting fees. Uh, permit and sighting fees and. After doing so and looking at kind of the high and the low of the counties that surround us and and there's obviously some reasoning. For each county and why they have in place, so there's no set set. Model or statute or whatever where they should be. The proposed is has come up with and he would be here today, but he's gone out of town. So I'm going to try and wing it for him. So the proposal would be um, a base fee. Uh, for sighting review of four thousand dollars. And that would cover up to three hundred and twenty, uh, three hundred and twenty acre project. Anything over three hundred and twenty acres would be then an additional two dollars and fifty cents per acre. And that goes up to uh, one thousand nine hundred and twenty acres. Once it gets to, uh, it would actually be one thousand nine hundred and nineteen acres, because once it gets to one thousand nine hundred and twenty acres or larger. Then then the uh, the rate is um, is fifteen thousand dollars. And in his document, uh, prepared documents here, that reflects the extensive review, analysis and coordination required by the administrative rule. Solar projects that are of that size and larger. Um, have extra review elements that they have to and man hours that that would have to be. Um, involved. And that can go up to. Three thousand eight hundred and forty acres. Once it gets beyond that size. Then it's another another process altogether wherein a state. Gets involved in site review on projects that big.
Is this an increase in fees then?
Yes. Yeah, currently, right now, I want to say I think our current flat rate fee is a thousand dollars right now.
And that was instituted when? How old is that?
Uh, it's fairly old. I don't know exactly when that was put in place, but it's but that's been in place for quite some time now.
So this would allow three thousand acres contiguous to be developed?
Yes.
Is that what Harney County wants?
Well, it's not allowing, that's that's um. Up to. I mean, you know, if somebody had private property in. With that amount, you know, with that size of uh, private property. And they came in to for a proposal, it'd have to go before the planning review board and and county. Approval.
So you're going to sacrifice good egg land, because that's the only.
We're not saying that we're going to do any of this at this time right now, okay, but you're twisting my words, ma'am, okay? So so what we're saying is it covers up to that amount of of acreage. And there will come checks and balances with that. It's not an automatic, we're not stamping it at this time to say that we're going to allow thirty eight hundred acres in solar. This is the fees that would be charged for that whole review process.
It would have to qualify under the zoning ordinances.
Yeah, the others.
One of them arguably do not. But there have been ones that have not qualified under the zoning ordinances.
All this is at this point is adding it to our fee schedule so that it can, so that we can charge those fees. The ordinance for fees will be read. Has to be read twice and we'll rate it the first time September meeting and then the mid-month September meeting for the second time. Uh, we're trying to consolidate all of these fees and get it done one time a year and it's. Just comes in at that time. This does nothing to amend any planning. Uh, you know, county planning. Processes or or strategic plans or land use plans. Of any kind, it's just it's just uh, authorizing fees that can be charged for it.
So this is just the first read?
Well, this isn't isn't. We'll do a first read September first. This was just the proposal. The proposal for. Or it is adding or increasing these fees. So we could add it to the schedule and then have the first reading next month. I didn't want to just put it on there and then go to a first reading without having a discussion on it. Looking at neighboring counties and their ways of, uh, the research that that Director McMullin. Um, conducted. Um, I think we're right in the ballpark with our neighbors.
Does that make it richer, man? If you were less, does that make Harney County more advantageous?
Yes.
More advantageous?
Based on fees? I mean, there's two sites.
Well, it makes us, it makes us competitive. I don't know if it makes us more advantageous. It makes us competitive and still the the site, you know, the the entity that's going to propose a site. Um, looks at Lake County, looks at Harney County, looks at Malheur County. You know, if we if we do twenty thousand dollars for a base review fee, then we're obviously going to price ourselves out. Um, and send the message that we don't want any solar development in Harney County. And there are some counties out there that do that.
My only comment would be is. It is the. Philosophy, I guess, of everyone, that all prices have to go up. It'd be nice if some of these prices had an opportunity to come down. I don't care what fee you're talking about. You think you're going to make money on this and you're putting it on the books as an opportunity. But to anybody looking to come here, whether it's building fees. Or solar farms. I think you're playing on rope lines.
If we're consistent with. Our neighbors. Um, I don't see, I mean, they're going to pay it. A big development is going to, it's 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 a, it's just a checkbox for them to have to. To do the development. Go ahead, Rick.
I just wanted to add that these projects are coming to places all over the state and that. The companies that are, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Say your name and position for the record.
Rick Stoffer, Building Official, Harney County. Um, these projects are coming in all over the state of Oregon. And the companies that are coming in are making millions and millions of dollars off of these and many times they're put on ground. That isn't ag land and I believe that there is a price difference between agricultural land. And what's considered maybe scrub desert that just isn't used for any agricultural purposes at all. And so when these companies come in and want to invest and do these things, we should make. The most amount of money that we can in comparison with other counties and I think that's. Uh, where this proposal from Brandon's coming from, since he's not here, I figured I'd weigh in a little bit, but. It. If they're coming here anyway and they're going to use this land and. It's only going to cost them a thousand dollars, it would be better to collect four thousand from them to help out with the general fund of the county.
But helps cover the man hours required to do those reviews. Um, and the processes, whether that's. The financial side of things, the the administrative side of things, those fees help cover all those costs.
They they do and we should be in line with other eastern Oregon counties with those fees.
And to make it less than sufficient to cover those costs, then the taxpayers is subsidizing those processes.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I have nothing to add for this.
Again, I don't know as we. There's not a rule book that says when we have to do a motion and when not, but. And I hate to do too much of this work when Commissioner Doros not here, but. In order to get it into that into that schedule and do the first reading next county court session. Um, I would make a motion to accept the fee increases as proposed by the building. Or the planning Department Director.
Just for clarification, this would be taking action to put it in our ordinance that sets all the fees. And so it will be discussed again or be subject to discussion when we go over those.
Yeah, yeah.
Second your motion.
Um, a motion's been made and seconded to accept the proposed fee increases for solar sighting, solar project sighting. Any further? Did I second that?
I seconded.
You said, I made the motion, you seconded, okay. Any further discussion? All favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? And opposed, hearing none, motion carries. I don't have any more new business. We did have the fee schedule. Uh, first reading on the agenda today, but with with these last minute. Topics, I didn't want to again push it through, so we'll do the fee first reading on the fee schedule next county court session. Correspondents. Received a notice from the Forest Service. Forest Service News Release Falls Fire Area Closure Reduction. Malheur National Forest, as of August fifteenth. Malheur National Forest officials have reduced the closure on the falls fire area. This closure is necessary. To provide protection for forest users' resources. Users' resources during the post-fire recovery and hazard tree mitigation efforts. And the forest fire closure. The Mount here forest fire hazard closure has a closure number is effective August fifteen, twenty twenty five through December thirty first, twenty twenty five. Unless rescinded sooner. Just so the public knows and I, um, and it doesn't have, I'm going to presume that the closure number zero six dash zero four dash zero two. Dash two five dash one four has the specific uh, boundaries. Identified. There is a map. For what it's worth that was attached to the letter and it's all in the agenda package. It's all I have for correspondence.
I have none.
I would love to make a comment at whatever point is appropriate. I wasn't here for the public comment, I have. Couple of things I'd like to say. Would just, I, for you to consider at future meetings.
Yeah. Well. I try to promote communication, but we have a schedule and an agenda to keep us on track, but please. Continue of a comment.
One comment is, um, Morgan Schmidt of the Oregon Red Cross. Stationed or she works out of Bend, spoke to me some time ago about forming a. Chapter here in Harney County in Burns with Melissa Todd. I haven't seen anything happen with that and if you're going to do a long-term recovery, I think we should be. Progress or proceeding with them establishing a chapter here so that people don't believe. When this area has a major problem, we have resources closer. The second item, I haven't seen this, I apologize for being late. The second item, I haven't seen this, I apologize for being late. On your recovery thing. I uh. Would ask that um under three. Six bullets down ineligible eight. Due to applicants being a business, a landlord. Already completed the work and can't be reimbursed, and I think that is absolutely wrong. If you want your businesses to survive, they have to basically proceed with recovery. And if they can show cost of what it costs them to do it, they should not be denied some. Um, cost recovery. I think that is absolutely insensitive to your business community.
So the purpose of of the long-term recovery group is to fulfill individual needs.
Those businesses employ your individual, so live in your houses.
Um, I, I understand that, but there's other avenues for businesses and commercial entities to. Uh, small business loans.
Not for newspapers.
While there was uh SB. SBC? Small Business America. SBA? That's been here for the last month and a half, offering low en- low interest loans. To both homeowners and commercial ones and just.
Your strings attached.
It's not a perfect world. And we don't have in in indefinite funding. You know, I think you have to look at, you have to look at uh from an individual's needs. Food, shelter and security. Yeah, but if they don't have food, shelter or security, they don't have anything. That's what this is intended to provide more for individual needs of those three basic human needs.
In the future or as it affects currently?
In in the current, in the, in the, in the time when they need it right now. I mean, those three things are revolving on a daily basis. It's like, is it Mas- Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs? You know, the very, very basic one is, is. So um. This is the intent of of the long-term recovery groups within the state that are around the state, the different ones that the way we've spoken to.
So if those businesses had not gone ahead and filed an insurance claim and were able to correct their damage. If they hadn't done that and they sat idle waiting until now, would they, would they apply, would they payment from this?
We, not under, not under the bylaws and the purpose of this group.
And who drew up the bylaws?
The group did.
And the group is all um. Members of other. Government programs.
No, no.
You have some people down here who are basically members, but they all work for the same organizations. There's no private people in here then to basically listen to what you're proposing and help to critique. The needs as it's going to impact them.
Sounds like perhaps these comments would be better for the long-term recovery group.
I didn't even know they existed.
You know now.
Again, it's one of those quiet little things that happen.
It's not quiet. They've been in the paper, they've been on the radio, they've, we've talked about it here in county court. You know, communication in this community is, is a problem. You can't send a mailer out to every address in town because it's expensive. You have the newspaper, you have the radio, you have word of mouth, you have social media. Um, I mean, quite frankly, I experienced it. In a, you know, very, very personally, I experienced it when I was in my campaign. And it costs a lot of money to send stuff to people, and if you go to the post office, a lot of those mailers end up right in the garbage. But people have to be engaged and have to, have to help themselves to, to find out. We've publicized through the hub. That those effort, that though, ever since the flood itself, that the hub was a clearinghouse for assistance. And that's where the SBA has been for the last month and a half, set up with their tables down there. Um, the long-term recovery group is housed or is. Uh, formed under the hub's nonprofit status. I don't, I mean, I don't know how to get it out to people any, it's not something quiet, it's not some secretive thing that's only helping certain, certain people. Uh, it's out there for everybody to come and and apply to, but there's limited resources in what we can do. With my other hat on and being on that board, uh, limited resources of what we can do to help people. So there has to be criteria established. Did they receive assistance from other, from other in sources such as insurance? Did they receive? Uh, assistance from Red Cross? Did they receive assistance in other forms from other, other nonprofits? And and what is their need after, after receiving that assistance? Um, I mean, it. If everybody could just come in and said, I need five thousand dollars because of the flood, be out of money in no time. There's gotta be a process. There's gotta be criteria. The uh, I will get with the the chairperson on on the long-term recovery group. And uh, it's, it's a nonprofit. Um, it doesn't have to, doesn't fall under the same public meeting. Criteria as a, as a public entity like the county court or the city, uh, city council. But uh, it probably would be something for them to think about, publishing their minutes or their uh, their meeting dates. And opening up to the public. So I will mention that to the chair and this will discuss it probably at the next meeting. Anything else? Meeting schedule, we are, what did we decide for fair week? We said we were gonna change for fair week.
I think we have briefly discussed the potential. Of changing for fair week. But I don't think we made a decision because that whole month is real busy for all the court members. And. I'm sure there'll be some conflict on that Wednesday, but I almost wonder if we shouldn't just have it.
And we didn't, we hadn't changed it, so I, but I couldn't remember what we had decided. In past discussions. So we'll just leave it. Uh, September third at ten o'clock and September seventeenth. At ten o'clock, regular session.
And I'll be absent on the seventeen, I'm planning to be anyway. I'll try to be here on the third.
Is um, that's not during your.
That's the Tillamook Explorer Lands.
Oh, yeah, and that's, that's the um. That's the O-Tech Business Summit too.
Yep.
Is the seventeenth. Well, we may need to look at the next meeting about changing the seventeenth then. See what everybody's schedule looks like, what days, what would be the best day to change it to. Alright, so for now, um. So for now, September third, ten o'clock is firm. September seventeenth is tentative, we may have to change it. Any other meetings? For the record.
Tomorrow. Is the Eastern Oregon Counties Association meeting and there's a LEPSE meeting that I think is gonna be in the Heinz City Hall.
Want me?
LEPSE, which stands for. All the safety people in the county, all the municipalities and emergency management. And I've been attending those meetings. I already contacted them and said I can't go tomorrow because of that ELOCA meeting. But Melinda runs that meeting. That's the LEPSE, L-E-P-C. On Monday, the twenty-fifth. Is the LIPSE meeting, which is LPSCC. And that has to do with some kind of law enforcement. Something or other.
Yeah, that's the, it's law enforcement entities. It's not a, it's not an open public because they do discuss some. Some stuff in there that's not open to the public.
I, I have on my calendar flood recovery meeting, day one and day two for August twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, but I. Don't have a note what exactly that's about. Organizer is OEM. Do you have that in your calendar, a two-day flood meeting?
I do, but I don't have an agenda on it to why it spans two days.
Two full days, that seems excessive.
Yeah. Let me get with uh. Let me get with emergency manager. And I'll email you. With more details.
They, at the last. One of those meetings that OEM ran, they had talked about coming and doing a meeting in Harney County. I didn't realize it was two full days. And we also, and I believe via the emergency manager. Comment them that that process needs to be driven by Harney County's needs. Instead of having fifteen agency people sitting in a meeting because that's what they're doing for the day. That's. Yeah, I think that's it between now and the next meeting. Next court meeting.
I don't have. Um, I don't have anything else either outside of what you mentioned. Updates. County Court deliberation, general deliberation.
Already talked about flying Schmidt. Just so it's on people's radar. I think everyone's aware of Oregon Water Resource Department's RAC five twelve. Proposed rule. And I think that there are a lot of people that feel like there were some better alternatives that were glossed over during that, and so I think there will likely. In the near future be a. Be a proposal and be some meetings to see if we can get community support for a scenario. Or a proposed rule that would be better for us so that when we go to the commission meetings in September and December. We aren't just saying we don't like your rules, but we, we have a suggestion for what would be more amicable for us. But I don't really have the details on that yet. On the.
Did I not, excuse me, did I not see an email from the community-based planning efforts that they come up with a consensus?
Oh, yeah, that's a whole separate deal. So the community-based water planning. Has reached final consensus on their integrated plan and they will have to present that. At the Water Commission meeting.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry to interrupt that, I wasn't sure if you guys were recording or not. Um, is there a possible way I can get in there?
Um, yeah, can you let me know?
Sorry.
Is it an, is this an N-Rac?
No.
Is this a public meeting?
Um, what meeting are you?
Where you're talking about water resources and.
Oh, the Water Commission, the Water Commission. I don't know if that's open to public. I would assume it is because they are a state commission. I don't know if they're available in person because it seems like some of their wildlife ones that deal with Fish and Wildlife Service. If you are public, public, you can only view virtually sometimes. So you'd have to look at their website, Oregon Water Resource Department, Water Resource Commission and see.
I would do that. I thought you were asking about the plan and the plan was something that just finished up, but it's been going on for like seven years. Right, but then we gave our testimony and something's supposed to happen with that.
That's for the meeting in September.
Yeah, so. In September, the Water Resource Department. Will present their proposed rule to the Water Resource Commission, who is made up of people from different regions in the state that have been appointed by the governor. With varying backgrounds. In this particular instance, there are past water attorneys, there are irrigators. There are conservation interests, it's pretty diverse. And they will present their rule to them. And. It is my understanding that they won't make a decision until December, but this is when they will be introduced to the rule is in September. The commission. And you asked, uh, the community-based water planning did reach final consensus. Will have to present that. At the Water Resource Commission meeting for them to accept it, which is ironic since. They're also looking at rules that don't incorporate, but you've already noted that.
And that was my, part of my conundrum. And why did we go through, why didn't they go through seven years of that planning and consensus work? And then draft the rules before it was ever done, or the proposed rules before it was ever done.
That's a good question. And so now that the community-based water planning group. Will start to move into implementation of their plan once it's accepted by the state and they will likely have. Harney Watership Council and High Desert Partnership facilitate people that will actually do those projects they've identified for priorities. And so they're moving into the implementation phase. So the, the collaborative that had been meeting as part of the community-based water planning group. Basically, that dissipates and some of those people will probably still be involved with the implementation phase.
Comment, right? I'm confused too because this, in this legislative session, they passed. A water bill that the governor has signed that talks all about DEQ, working with water resources. And everything and it. Took when I read over it, uh, and I haven't spent excessive time with it, but. It seems to me a lot of the rules are already made into law. A lot of the rules that is in the water resources agenda. Is already law. Since the governor signed that.
I don't know, I don't know which bill you're referencing, because there was several water. Yeah, I'm curious to see. The, for the fair update. Of course, fairs in a couple of weeks in terms of their capital projects. They are still planning to be on schedule from their modified schedule. And so at the very least, they are hoping to have, all the uprights are already up down there. They've made significant progress on the roofing, on the lean-to. And. I don't know how much further they'll get besides that, but I did think it was worth noting that. Because of the steel trust structure of that building. It actually acts as a pergola and in the afternoon is really shady, so that's kind of a nice.
When the sun's at the right angle?
In the afternoon, yeah, it's, it's not bad at all and it. It looks good down there. They, they announced their grand marshal will be Stephen Christie Rickman. I, I don't know if that's official yet, probably, but that's what they discussed. They're gonna have themed nights again this year. And they're also going to have a carnival. Instead of bounty houses and they're having the NPRA rodeo. I don't know if that's the right letters for it, but yeah, so they're gonna have a rodeo as well.
Sanctioned, sanctioned rodeo.
Yep. And Thursday will be family night and be patriotic theme, and I can't remember where they landed for sure. On this, but I wanna say that. Family night, the entry into the family rodeo will be a donation, and they had talked about accepting canned food donations. So that. So it incentivizes families to come out and not have to spend a arm and a leg to take their family out for a night.
Turbies this weekend, Saturday? Afternoon?
So on Saturday, it's starting earlier in the day, I think they're opening gates at three. Because the electricity, with lack of electricity, they're not gonna be allowed to have lights, and the gentleman who is. Putting on the derby kinda spoke to the pros and cons of that, and it sounds like there hasn't been a lot of negative feedback about that change in timing. And the people that have had concerns, once he explained it to them, it was alright, so hopefully that will be a well-attended event. And with the. With the Fair Event Center, I think we are still on track, and from what I've heard and Rick's on, he might know better. But I think the construction company has been in contact with him, I think their engineers have. Been putting together the egress plans and all of that, so. Hopefully, on the timeline that we had discussed with the fire marshal and the local fire chief. And the building department director, hopefully will still be right on that timeline, and will be able to walk through. And make sure everything is satisfactory for a temporary occupancy. So we can have the hundred, hundred and first fair there.
Camera froze. Yeah, and last week. Um we rushed through a check through accounts payable for the bathrooms. It's gonna be close. For the contractor, if they get the materials. And get it, be able to get it installed before fair time. But hopefully. Past couple weeks, I've been working on with the contractor for the jail project. Uh trying to uh. You know, get the language done and everything for the contract, but it's been awarded, but now we actually have to have the contract spell out. Expectations and work to be done. So um working with the contractor, working with the attorney to get that done, and. And we have a kickoff meeting scheduled for September ninth. But it's gonna be mostly, most of the day meeting with the. You know sheriff and his staff and designers, architects and everybody kinda brainstorming elements and features and. Possibilities. So. We're getting there, hopefully they'll have something, because of the spending. Deadlines on some of that money, the ARPA funds, they're actually projecting it to be done next year. Which will be a fast project if they do, but. Hopefully, our winter here doesn't get in the way of that. Like it has other projects. That's the biggest problem with highlight that I have for update. Anything else? I don't have anything, um with that, then we shall adjourn, thank you.
Thank you. I almost brought it up just, but I didn't think it was necessarily appropriate.